Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. If you'd be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could we have the roll call, please? Good evening, planning commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Carter.
Present.
Vice Chair Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper is noted absent, and Commissioner Smith.
Kirk Smith. Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum. Could we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? And I will note that because we do not have all five commissioners, we will not be hearing item, what is it, 12, one new business, election of officers.
And 12, two.
And also 12, two minute of bylaws.
I'll move to adopt the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Hearing none. Agenda is so adopted. Item five, consent calendar, the item on the consent calendar is 5.1. Do any commissioners have any comments regarding the minutes? Commissioner Carter?
I had a question for staff. I missed this condition of approval.
Which item?
Give me one second. So it's going to be item 10.1, Section 12, Item E, one of the conditions of approval, church activities to be restricted to church property only. I was curious why that was included in there, and what is, is that something that's common that we do for churches?
Churches are allowed in any zone under a conditional use permit, so there was a conditional use permit for this property at one point. This is part of the conditions that were pulled forward from the prior approval, so I understand your confusion.
Does that preclude them from having events off of their, I mean, is that something that we even have the authority to tell them they can't have events off of church property?
Um, here, I guess that's a question for you.
Your last meeting basically focused on a revision of the site plan review and not the conditional use permit. We just carried those conditions forward since the conditional use permit and site plan review were combined applications, and so we just moved those forward.
That makes sense, but nonetheless, the condition itself is quite confusing. Because it, does that preclude them from having like a church picnic up at Benham Park or, you know, pick, I don't even sure what that, what that means. What does it mean, the only thing they can do on the property are church service related? It's not worded very well, and we, we can't deal with it here, but I think it's, I think it's probably important to point it out to staff, maybe go back and look, see what does that exactly mean? Because reading it like this, I'm not sure what it means.
Yeah, condition noted. I think staff has extreme limited ability to modify a previous condition that was adopted by a previous planning commission, and so comment noted, nobody's said anything about it. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can really do about at this point in time. If the applicant had issue, we can certainly, you know, go through the exercise of re-agendizing it and bringing it back to the planning commission for reconsideration. We'd have to go through the whole noticing requirements and everything else, and so unless it's something, at least from staff's perspective, if it was something that was an issue with the applicant or property owner, we probably would just leave it alone until such time as it became a problem.
Got you. Well, this is good for our education, I think. Anything else?
I just wanted to point out that maybe if we had the whole package that those conditions were a part of, it might make more sense to us today, but we just had the, kind of the summary that needed to be carried over, so, yeah, I think the, I was a little confused by that, but, yeah, since it related to a previous action, anyway.
Yeah, and my question was, was educational. I underst, you know, the applicant obviously didn't have a problem with the condition. I just wanted to know for myself, for future reference, what that was referring to, so thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions on the minutes? Any members of the public have a question or comment on the minutes?
Good evening, Michael Drobish, Placerville.
Good evening, Mr. Drobish.
I saw that condition also, and I take it as it's highly unconstitutional. If they wanted to go preach the gospel in Africa or South America, the city has no authority to tell them they can't do church activities off. So you could either just determine it's unconstitutional, unenforceable, and ignore it, make a note. There's also a motion to reconsider, bring it back, and delete. So those are some things I know you could probably do. The minutes, I went back and re-watched the video of, for the church deck, I forget the item number, and re-watched it, there was discussion of having them paint all the existing railing white. But when it came to the motion, the motion was, "The railing shall be white, and the screening shall go to staff for approval." And there was no mention of, in the motion, of painting the rest of the railing white. There was discussion beforehand, but it didn't actually make it into the motion the way the video plays. So I was just wondering, because in the minutes, it shows the condition being, "Paint the rest of the fence," and where do you stop? You know, they go all the way around the building, what do they do?
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I actually had the same question in my mind, but I didn't go back to look at the video, so I appreciate that comment. I'll defer that to staff to go back and make sure. So I don't know if we want to-
Because you could, it's not critical with the minutes, you could table it to the next meeting and you all-
Right, correct, well, that's where I was going to go. Any other comments, Mike?
Um, just the, the retaining wall on the other item.
Yeah, on the brewery, beer garden?
It was, it's weird that it made it into the conditions when it was said that it wasn't under the purview of your item action that night, so I don't know. I don't mind seeing it there, because it's in the record going forward, but it was just interesting that that happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else in the audience have comments on the minutes? Closed public comment on that, and then just returning to staff, I mean, I, what was just described, Pierre, it was exactly kind of my recollection that we talked about both, and then I thought we kind of softened our position and didn't necessarily require it. So I would prefer that we table approval of the minutes to give staff an opportunity to go back and review to make sure that this is correct. Is, would that be okay? Do we, any issues with that?
Staff can certainly do that. I would just state that it was, at least, staff's interpretation of what the motion was, what the discussion of the commission was, that there was to be the railing that was going to replace the existing wood railing on the deck, and that was going to be painted white. And then, if you recall, we showed some photographs that we took of, of the entire ramp. It was basically a, an accessibility ramp, and the ramp all the way, and as Mr. Drobish spoke, there's ramps in the back behind the building, it's all metal, it's all tube metal painted black. And so it was our interpretation that the planning commission wanted not only that wood portion, because we, we, we had photographs up on the wall for you, and we showed a different, all the different elements in that area, even a chain link fence that was nearby, that the portion of that black tube railing was also to be painted white. But if you feel that that's not correct, that you only meant for the railing that was going to replace that wood railing on that deck portion, then we can certainly reflect that. So if, if the commission recalls what was meant to be direction to staff-
Right.
We could do that. If you're not sure, staff is happy to go back, we can table this, and we can listen to the tape and listen to the minutes and see.
I have, I have Commissioner Smith before.
I was just going to say, this was my motion, and that, painting just the railing on the historical structure is what I intended. I may not have expressed that, well, because I now remember we did have a discussion of the two different types of railing, so my apologies if I wasn't clear in what my intent was, so.
Okay. That was, that was my recollection. Commissioner Smith, you have a comment?
If you'd like to-
Microphone, please.
If you'd like to continue it for that purpose, to get the clarification, look at the tape, that's fine with me, and I would support it.
Okay, thank you. And Pierre, your recollection may be entirely correct. I don't recall with sufficient definition as to whether, what's entirely true, although I'm inclined to, to believe what Commissioner Keeney, that, that's much closer to my recollection. So I would entertain a motion to table the minutes to give staff an opportunity to review to make sure this particular item is consistent with what the motion was, just for that sake.
Moved.
Yes, I have a motion, can I get a second? Can I get a, I'll second it. Any additional discussion on that? All in favor of tabling the minutes until staff has opportunity to review the minutes against the videotape, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay.
I'm going to abstain. As I said, it was my motion, I think it's correct, but, you know, I don't want to hold this back, so I'm just going to abstain from the-
Okay, fair enough.
So Vice Chair Friend, just for clarification then, looking at page three of nine of the minutes, condition of approval number two, basically where, what we're going to focus on is, is that, is that second portion of that sentence where it's comma, "And existing railing shall be painted white." We would look at removing that, everything else would remain the same, and I think that would reflect the motion made by Commissioner Keeney.
I'll, I'll say yes to that, but since you're going to be there, I think it would be good just to review what was said and what, what was in the motion at that point.
No, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. Okay, great. So that's Roma numeral three, item two, with regards to the church. Okay, that was good. That's most exciting minutes review we've had in quite some time. All right, um, so that was item 5.1. Item six, we already discussed, items pulled from the consent calendar. Items of interest to the public, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the commission on items which are not on our agenda? This is your opportunity to bring to the commission those, something that's not here. The commission cannot take action on items that you bring forward, and your time will be limited to three minutes unless you're otherwise riveting. Mr. Drobish?
I remember my glasses this time. Okay, um, the, I let the city know about the, the parking restrictions, and there's a code section that details exactly where red curbs are and all that, and there's actually, on Main Street, between Cedar Ravine and Mosquito Road, there is no parking all the way on the south side. When they rebuilt the road and the sidewalks, they just never repainted the curb red. So all those problems we've been having with on-street parking on both sides, and people having to cross the double yellow to get around it, should disappear soon, so. And then I followed up, last meeting I mentioned, Planning Commission Resolution 201901, it was to provide an exemption to the SOI, and it looks like it was never actually codified. So the code that it reads now, if you bring it up, it just says, "The only exemptions to Secretary of Interior's are routine maintenance and repair." So that's how I read it. And then, you're not going to talk about the bylaws, but they're in there, you have the ability to create subcommittees. You are, as you sit now, the Historical Advisory Committee. Planning Commission, when they disbanded that group, gave you and staff the authority as the Historical Advisory Committee, and I don't see why you couldn't create a subcommittee to start taking voluntary applications from structures around the city to become included into the historic resource. And I'm sure there's other topics that you could create subcommittees for. So that would save, in my mind, staff time, city council time, they don't have to put out Mount Democrat ads for interview session, have an interview, and then have a certain number of committee members fall away and disband it again. You keep it in-house. It just seems like it might be a cheaper, easier way to do it, just some thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to item eight, written communications. Do we have any written communications for items not related to agenda items?
We have no written communications, Vice Chair Friend.
Thank you. Item nine, presentations, I don't believe we have any presentations this evening. And that brings us to environmental assessments, public hearings, item number 10, 10.1. This is a site plan review, window replacements, and it's a historic district review of a single-family residence in the historic district zone, and I believe, Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report on this. Thank you.
I do. Site Plan Review 23-05 is a request from the applicant to replace 12 wood windows with vinyl, paint the exterior siding, gutter, trim, and door, and replace exterior lighting fixtures on an existing single-family residence located within the Cedar Ravine Historic District. Additional information on the proposed project is included as Attachment 1 of the staff report, applicant's submitted package. The subject structure falls within the architectural style of ranch house and has features typical of the style, including construction as a single-story, single-family home, as well as the low-pitched roof, asymmetric facade, decorative stone along the base of the front, and a picture window. The structure was built in 1952, and the windows for replacement appear to be original to the house. It is staff's opinion that the painting of the exterior and replacement of the existing contemporary lighting fixtures as proposed would be consistent with goal C of the general plan, community design element, as well as Section 4 of the development guide, in that the improvements would visually enhance the character of the structure from the street. However, it is staff's opinion that the replacement of the existing windows with vinyl is inconsistent with actions recommended by the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, which recommend that historic windows be repaired when possible or replaced with windows that match the original in design, color, texture, and material. The city has reviewed this request and has determined that there are two possible environmental review determinations. The first, as replacement of the windows as proposed does not follow actions recommended by the SOI standards and guidelines. Staff finds that the project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. If the commission determines that the project moved forward, staff finds that environmental analysis of the impact to the historic resource would be required. The second, if planning commission denies the request, per staff recommendation, the project would be found exempt from SEQA. Per SEQA Guideline, Section 15061B4, as a project disapproved, is exempt from environmental review. Staff recommends that the planning commission deny the request as submitted and as analyzed in the staff report dated April 18th, 2023. This concludes staff's report on SPR 23-05.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter, and of course, window replacement in the historic district is one of my favorite topics. Do any commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Keeney?
I have a few questions for staff. In the report, the project as proposed is to paint the entire body and, and trim of the house above the rock facade, a single-color alabaster, and then have the, I guess it's, I think it's just one door, the front door painted a bright red. This, to my eye, my thinking is a more modern look. I know people like to have a, a bright-colored door on their house, and to me, it's more modern and not in keeping with the style of, of the ranch houses from that era. And this is something dealing with the trim and the facade treatments that are also described in the Secretary of Interior Standards, as well as our development guidelines. So I would like to know a little bit more about why that was not addressed in the staff report, and also if there is some example of this as being, reflecting the style, the facade treatment of houses from that era.
So, excuse me, so when staff was looking at the color that was being presented, one of the dilemmas I think staff had was respect to this particular time period. It was, staff tried to research examples of 1950s-style painting, and really, we had difficulty in doing so. So say, for example, in the more recent past, the Plant Planning Commission has reviewed older homes, homes that were built around the turn of the century, homes built in, say, 1890 or, you know, 1910 kind of a thing. It's, it's very easy to find color palettes that represent what was used or what the colors were prominent during those time periods, where in the 1950s, it's much more difficult. And so obviously, I think this is an area where staff is hoping to defer a little bit more to the commission as a whole to determine what is appropriate. It sounds like you have a very good handle on, on what was more prominent in the 1950s, maybe than staff had. You know, we only, unfortunately, we didn't, we were running out of time to spend on researching the paint, and so, but well, well taken. I think you're, you're, you're correct, that I would think that there, that there was more attention paid to trim at that time. I think a lot of us were probably raised in 1950s ranch-style homes, myself included, and I do work-
I, I don't want to put you on the spot as far as a palette, I, you know, I understand that information like, for that is, is limited for this era, as opposed to a house with a lot of gingerbread trim, something of that era. I think it'd be easy to, to come up with a color palette that you could learn from. But I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding the standards and our development, city development guidelines, that facade treatments such as trim and color are also to be, important to consider when preserving, particularly preserving homes in our historic district. I have a second, actually, I have two more questions. One is about the light fixture, and in the staff report, and part of the project, there are two proposed, and in the staff report, there is a reference that the carriage lantern sconce maybe fits in with other, or would be appropriate for other houses in the neighborhood, but perhaps isn't an apt choice for the architectural style of this one. And again, I'm just looking for clarification that a, a light fixture is a facade treatment, and therefore it is an important thing to consider when we're talking about historical preservation. So I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding our guidelines.
You are understanding them. I think, again, and staff's apologies to the commission, we just had very limited information on what would be an appropriate light standard for the exterior of this house. If you look on page nine of the staff report, you can see what's existing. I think those, I would say, probably were not the original light fixtures that were placed on that house when it was first constructed, so those came later. You know, personally, I, I like what they're proposing, but I totally agree, this is not the style of a 1950s ranch-style home that you would see. I certainly would see these on a, on a completely different style, like maybe a Tudor-style house or, or something, or a, or a country French or something like that, kind of a different architectural style. I mean, very, very nice, but, you know, staff agrees, and so I think it's certainly within the purview of the commission to give some additional direction on what you would prefer to see as far as exterior lighting on, on the building.
And from the perspective of the chair, I would like to revisit both of these two items-
Oh.
When we get to our discussion. And I didn't want to, I didn't want to, to restrain you in your comments now, but these are some common discussion I think we could have when we get back to the discussion component.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
I just, I bring it up now to make sure that I understand, and also to the, give the public a chance to respond to these as well, because when we bring it back to commission, it's, it's kind of difficult then if someone has a strong opinion to, if someone in the audience has a strong opinion. My last question for staff is the SEQA implications. And I would like to know what is the appropriate level of analysis for something like that? This is for, like, everyone's education. I, I don't know that any of us have seen something like that, where a homeowner challenged the SOI standards, so are we talking initial study, neck-deck, mitigated, what, what level would be appropriate?
Certainly an initial study. We would be looking at the house itself, as well as the historic district that surrounds it. And from the initial study, we would determine if it's a neck-deck or a mitigated neck-deck, but it would be ISM and E or IND.
And any idea of the cost, which would be borne by the applicant, right?
We have a fee, it's in our fee schedule, I don't have it at the top of my head, but it's in our fee schedule.
But it is an expense that would be borne by the applicant.
Correct.
On that point, because that was one of my questions, do we have an approximate, can you guess the cost? Five dollars, $500, $5,000, any idea what it is?
I'm thinking it's somewhere between $1,200, $2,000. It's a flat fee.
Yeah, sure.
So unless a project rises to an environmental impact report, well, then that's time and materials.
Right.
But this wouldn't rise to that level. But, but we're, we would not be able to categorically exempt this project unless it, we firmly believed it met the Secretary of Interior standards.
Okay, got it. Any other questions to staff by commissioners?
I just want to thank staff for addressing my concerns.
So then, Commissioner Keeney asked one of the questions he had, which was cost. Item, on the first page of the staff report, the, the fourth finding that the project is subject to the SEQA because of the way it is presented, right? I understand that correctly. And if we deny it, I, I'm confused on the, if it's denied, then it gets a categorical exemption. What does that mean, the project's denied?
It's not considered a project at that point.
Oh, okay. All right, it's not considered a project. So then, I realize that in, in recent history, when we have had items like this come before us, it's created some, a bit of a kerfuffle, and I do not wish to create any kind of a dust-up, but I want to be clear, because I know the council has taken some very specific stances with regards to vinyl windows in historic district. At the same time, the council has not removed our authority or our discretion, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
You have full authority to make the appropriate findings you feel is appropriate to, you know, approve, deny, or modify the project.
Okay, so just to be clear, and I want to beat the point a little bit, just to be clear, the council has, has made it clear what, what their desires are and the direction they want to see, but they have not removed from us our ability to review the project and exercise the authority that we have.
The planning commission is an independent body that provides for independent approval of certain projects-
Okay.
Unless appealed to the city council, or you are an advisory on those projects that require city council approval.
Okay, and again, just, just to be clear, it's not my intent or desire to create any kind of kerfuffle, and I, I support the intent of our historic guidelines, you know, and what they're attempting to achieve, so. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I will invite the applicant to address the commission. I'm sorry, did you have a question? Pardon me, hold, one second.
I do have one more question for staff, and it's in regards to that property, I'm sorry, the lantern sconce, because on page 11, you did recommend the property owner consider a less ornamental lantern sconce. Did they present you with any other options prior to the hearing?
No, they did not.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions by commissioners? All right, now I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak to the commission on your project. Before we get started, I do just want to thank you personally for the letter that you included in your packet. As to your rationale for our consideration, particularly for the exceptions, I found it very well-worded and very clear.
Thank you.
And for me, it was, it was helpful. So with that, thank you and welcome.
Well, thank you. Do I need to state my name?
Well, thank you. Do I need to state my name? Paul Cogelaugh. My wife Andrea's here. Thank you Kristen and Pierre. Even though I don't agree with everything, I know you're just doing your job. And they've been wonderful in helping me along the way as well. So thank you guys. So you read the letter, so I don't want to like waste everyone's time and go regroup this. I don't really, I'll be honest, I don't really care about the walls, the lights, like whatever, lights are lights. The color, we did go with the color because it's very hard to match that stonework that's on the property right now. And we wanted to blend with the rest of the community. And we felt like having just the trim that matches the roof and just the one body color goes with, I know it's not a 1950's home, but I don't really consider 1950's actually a historic home. And that's a disagreement that we can agree to disagree on. But it matches the rest of the vintage homes that are in the area as far in our opinion. Not all of them, but a lot of them are a solid color with just a roof and the gutters either match or don't match that. So that's why we went with that. We do like, we do have a little bit of concern if we go with that alabaster and it clashes with the stonework, if it needs a little bit more gray or a little bit more yellow to make it actually look sharp. That is, like, I don't know, like it's very difficult to like plan all this ahead of time, to get it done ahead of time. So even with the gutter colors, like I feel like we have it pretty spot on, but if it's like totally like gray, or turns out gray, because you know, when you dry paint, it turns out different. Like, these are things that, we're going to make it look sharp, but there's a little bit of variance. The red door actually has, like, it's not a big deal to us, but it's, the home for us is, it's a little red house. And so we wanted to keep something red, even though I can't stand the color red on the house. So that's just why we wanted that. You read, already know why, I don't really feel like this house will, I mean, I'm glad it's in the historic district because I like neighborhoods that look sharp and to keep it clean. I think that's good for the value and stuff. We want to match all that. But as far as the structure goes, like, as you saw from my reasoning already, it's in the Cedar Bluff subdivision, which isn't even, no other house in that subdivision's in the historic district. Just, these two happen to land in it. And so we just feel, not necessarily, we can follow this stuff, but putting in the vinyl windows. And I don't want to draw any attention to other vinyl windows because I don't know what's been permitted, what has been permitted. And I know this is an issue. Is a big deal to us for really twofold. Number one, it's half the price. And I'm already like, I could go bid elsewhere, but I've already put a down payment because I didn't, being a knucklehead, I didn't realize the, because I saw other vinyl windows in the area, I didn't think it would be a big deal. So we put a down payment down. So we're kind of, we're stuck with halls as it is for our window choice. There are wood windows, as was in the thing, was twice as expensive roughly as the vinyl windows. Wood windows take a lot more maintenance. And I'll be honest with you, like, maintenance isn't something when my daughter's living in the house, I'm going to be able to do. And so vinyl windows don't take any maintenance. And so, I mean, besides cleaning. And so, that's a big deal to me actually. And these, I'm put picture windows in, where picture windows are, where there's a horizontal sash, there's going to be another horizontal sash. Nothing's going to look any different from the street. If you get up close to it, you'll see that it's vinyl. But from the street, like you won't be able to tell. Right now, it's actually an eyesore in the neighborhood. It's been an eyesore for the last decade. We're really working hard to clean that up. I don't know if you've driven by lately, all the brushes, I mean, there's still a pile of wood out in the front, I know, it takes time. But all the brush and all the billions of miles of blackberry bushes are gone. So we are working at making this a cute property that fits in the area, but it is taking, and it's taking longer than what I was hoping. So we're working on it. And we do, yeah, it's just us. So it just takes time. But it will be there. And it's going to, we'll landscape it, and it'll look really sharp. We just need, you know, to get through it. So I do hope you'll consider like, you guys, from what I read, you guys can make the determination to do, you know, what's appropriate for the area. And we don't feel like we're taking away from any value in the area by doing this. If we were to like repair these single pane windows as they are, which would be a nightmare. But they have screens that like, because it's that old school style where the screens stick on the outside of the trim, and it looks hideous. And so, like, this actually cleans all this kind of stuff up and makes it like sharp with the rest of the property. So, I mean, we're just hoping that you guys will see that we're not taking away or distracting from any of the values of the actual truly historic homes in the district. We are going to continue to maintain the nature of the district with our proposal. And really, no value's changing. But you know, it's not a very expensive home. Let's be real. It's just a little two in one. So it's nothing, it's not like it's like a big Victorian home or anything like that. And I hope you'll just take that into consideration. We would love, like I was hoping to actually hear your discussions before we answer that because there's a bunch of acronyms, Kristen, throughout. I don't even know what that means. I mean, I know a SEQA and some of that stuff is, but there was some other ones if they were talking about which I'll be in your office asking what that means and where I need to go from there. But, so, we're just hoping that you'll see that we're going to, you know, we take pride in ownership. We're going to take care of this property. And it's actually, what we're doing is actually going to add to the neighborhood and not take away from it. And there's no reason, in our estimation, and I think most, the population in general wouldn't look at these 1950's little ranch homes. They're like of any significant value. And like, I mean, I hate to be, they're significant to us, but they're not, in a historic sense, as long as it looks sharp, it's not really something that's of historical value. It's not one of the main street homes. It's not one of the Victorians or anything like that. So I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, good. That's a nice segue to my asking if commissioners have any questions of the applicant. I know I have a couple, but I always defer to commissioners first. So questions?
I just want to add my thanks to Commissioner Friends for the letter that you wrote. You brought up a lot of good topics about this historical district. I think that it is, it really hits the nail on the head, if you will, of how it's been a little confusing and maybe has led to some, you know, frustration. And so thank you for that extra effort. It was well written. But as you know, we have to operate under the ordinance of, you know, I hope the city council takes a look at that and perhaps we can, at some point, not modify, but clarify that ordinance. But my question for you, we do have to adhere to the Secretary of Interior standards, SOI. And so in that, it describes a process of, you know, first you preserve, and obviously in this case, you know, it was not maintained. The features were not preserved. But my question for you, in the, in your application, you just generally stated that the windows weren't, I think you said majority were not. How, I would feel more comfortable if I had an inventory of, you know, which windows are not operable. And more importantly, I think is, what effort have you gone to to try to restore them? Because that is the next step in the standards. So can you elaborate?
Sure. There's single pane windows, I don't want to restore them. Single pane windows are not energy efficient. So there's no desire to restore them, to be honest with you. Everything, it'd be a very expensive process to actually take them out, router out the insides, put in dual pane windows, and do that. So in my estimation, and I appreciate where you're coming from, I read through the whole process of your different options, that is not a feasible option. For me to pay someone to do that would, I have no idea how much that would cost. But the hours involved in that is significant. And as we know, labor hours are very expensive.
And so you, this is not something that you've tried to restore those windows, or even had a contractor come out and give you an estimate on that?
No ma'am, sorry.
Okay. So that, about the color choice, and I don't, my personal opinion of the color choice, that doesn't come into play here. You know, whether, we tend to say, well, I like that, I don't like that.
Sure.
My concern is, it is, it's just a dramatic change. We've got a red house with white trim. And again, I don't want to constrain you to that color choice. As I drive through the neighborhoods, and I do need to state at this point that I did visit, I drove by your property. And I
Doing your research.
I'm familiar with the other districts in the city. And I live in an area that has nothing but ranch homes. Yeah, that's all we've got.
I live in a ranch home myself.
So yeah, there are a lot of them in Placerville. And I really can't think of any examples where there was that monochrome body, you know, the trim and the body were the same. And I appreciate that you're concerned about matching the stone because that's one of my problems with the current red, is that it doesn't, it may have changed over time. It doesn't really go with that element.
Yeah, agreed.
So what is important, and I want to make sure that you understand and appreciate that, I feel it's important for us to keep that style of trim versus body. And I also, have you noticed in the area that that's the, or can you, I guess it's fair to ask you, do you have an example that you can bring to us to say, this is pretty much the same vintage and is authentic?
Not with the vintage. The homes that are more the single color are much more Victorian style homes. And so I can't say that the ranch home that I've seen like that, I've seen modern day pictures of it, you know, the one color with, you know, one accent feature here or there. But that's also redone because these homes normally aren't something that have been preserved in their original state. I don't know if you could find, I haven't done the research, and I'm not going to do the research to find a true 1950's ranch style home that's been painted the same color for 50 or 70 years or wherever we're at now. So I don't have a good answer to that, unfortunately. Our goal was to match the neighborhood and the styles of the exist, of the colors of the Victorian homes to go with the neighborhood, not to actually keep this looking totally different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions?
So you gave us several options with regards to the color. We just had a discussion on what the color would look like. So we can, it sounds to me like you're amenable to a variety of colors. You've given us multiple options.
Sure. As long as it looks good. I don't want a purple house.
No, purple's fine. I actually am fond of the red, fond of the house, of the color that it is, the way it is. And to have that just redone similarly would make me really happy. At the same time, going back to your comment, which we can discuss earlier, I grew up in a home built in 1961, ranch home. I think it qualifies as kind of the same era, same style.
Yes.
I believe our house was white, black trim with a bright red door. At one point, the door, my dad painted it black. Other houses in the neighborhood. So I think there was a variety of color palettes that might have been available for those ranch homes. I'm not too concerned about that. I think the contrast is nice. Whatever you decide to do is nice. You know, my preference would be to keep it similar to what you have now. But we can have that discussion. My sense was though, you were willing to work pretty flexible with all of that.
With color in that, yeah, absolutely.
With regards to the light, with regards to the light fixtures, frankly, what you're proposing, I found to be relatively similar to what's already on the house. So I, and I think that they probably were not the original fixtures. The original fixture is probably just a light bulb, a yellow light bulb more than likely to keep the bugs away. That's what I remember growing up with, a yellow light bulb. So I'm not concerned about what you propose in that direction, but that's something that the commission will discuss in greater detail. The windows, and we're going to have to have this discussion because I come from a little bit different mindset on this topic. The one thing that's unfortunate is all of your windows are visible from either Cedar Ravine or Darlington. So none of the windows can be exempt because frankly, if you had some windows that couldn't be seen from the street, then I think you don't have to worry about those. I appreciate you putting in the cost information because we rarely get that, okay, to make a decision on. But I don't know, I don't know specifically what we're going to be able to do about that. We'll just have to wait and see how the discussion goes. But appreciate your willingness to work with us on the other elements. So, does anyone else have any questions? Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
I guess I wanted to begin by echoing what's already been said. We've looked at many applications before. It's well written and it's appreciative. And I grew up in a house that was built in the 1950's up on Carson Road. And there's some remarkable similarities. If you took a photograph of the stonework of the house I grew up in, it'd look just like what you have. And I agree with the others, that the color palettes that you've come up with are consistent with what you have. And likewise, the fixtures, the light fixtures that you proposed for the front are consistent with that era. The questions I have is about those windows.
Sure.
Because just looking at exhibit eight, page eight, I know you can't see it from there, but you can probably visually get an idea as to which one I'm referring to on your literature. It shows an example of your vinyl windows. And what it shows is big empty gaps around the frame of the vinyl window. So it sometimes can be a case where you have the illusion of you saving money, but in the long term, not. Because while you have the triple pane windows, you have a new frame around it that has the ability to conduct heat and cold. So the question really is, and then when you have the original frames, you get the ceiling of that thermal protection. So the question is, have you looked at having triple pane windows put in the same frames that you have now? And have you looked at other companies and other contractors? You've given us two figures. Those figures are from the same contractor, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And it's the same kind of material. But what we've heard from other instances is that there's lots of manufacturers that come up with different kinds of framing that offers heavier insulation. So what have you looked at for those other options?
With, is what we were going for was the least distracting from the framing that's there. So all the windows that we priced out were windows that you install from the inside. You pull out the old, the old hung windows that are in there, that are, they're not built in place. And they pop out, and these ones are just square windows. There's no flange on them or anything like that. And they go right back in against it. So they, they fit in exactly the same as the original windows that were there. So there is no, nothing happens with the outside of the home as far as the trim work goes, or the ceiling of the windows. These things slide right into them. And they're white as well as, these ones are white except for with the paints peeling and stuff. So that's what we looked at because to me, that keeps the character the same. And it just replaces, in our estimation, like for like, which I know that's, that's a relative term and up for discussion. But, so that, it actually slides them right in there. So the only trim that's changed is what's on the inside of the house to reseal the inside of it. And they just do a little bit of foam inside of it, and then a little piece of trim on the inside and they're, and it's done and over with.
I guess the question is, when you're talking about an increase of twice as much for using the wood, that's the initial investment. What about the energy savings over 10 or 20 years? Will, do you have any data? Because
I don't have any data on that.
Yeah. It's nice to use terms like echo three, as if to suggest it's going to save you money.
So the wood windows would have the same energy efficiency. So I didn't, not the present ones, obviously, but the replacement wood windows would have the same energy efficiency. The problem with the wood windows is wood windows take a lot of care and maintenance. They're not something that you can just put in, clean with soap and water, and walk away from. They, every few years, they need to be resealed and repainted. And there's just a lot of work that goes into wood windows. Which, as you can see, if, I don't know how close you guys got when you drove by the home, but they're in bad shape. And yeah, it is refurbishable. And I didn't ask anybody, I mean, I could get a couple bids on that. I don't, I doubt that that will be, I don't, I don't know. I can't imagine that being any cheaper because it's a lot of labor. And honestly, I really don't want to put in wood windows because I don't want to maintain them like that. them like that.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, I just also appreciate what you've written about the frustration it must have when you look around and you see other houses that have had vinyl windows installed and wonder, why shouldn't that apply for you?
Because I'm doing it. I'm doing it right.
The answer is, I don't know, because I wasn't around for those.
Oh, yeah.
I just know that the oath I took was to follow the law, no matter how it turns out, whether I like it or not.
Yeah. I think there's some gray area and some wiggle room for some of this stuff, too. When you read through the stuff, like, I think there's some room for you guys to make a decision based on not distracting from the overall appearance and feel of the neighborhood, but not, like, this home was 29 years old when the city put the ordinance into place. So, it really wasn't a historic home when the city put it into place because technically, at the time, 50 years was considered historic, and this, it wasn't when the city put this ordinance into place. So, and again, I don't mind keeping the appearance and the aesthetics and the feel of the neighborhood. Like, I desire that. We don't want to take away from that at all. I just don't want to spend extra money on a not very expensive home that really isn't a historical home. I mean, I live in a 1964 ranch-style home. It's got the same exact features. It's had aluminum windows, it's had other windows, it's got vinyl windows now, and it still looks good. So, that's where we feel, and I think you'd, like, I didn't bring in an audience of people, I'll save that for City Council. But, like, again, there's character in a lot of our buildings and structures that need to be, that are, you know, on the historical thing. This home's only in it because of the neighborhood, not because of its structure itself.
Commissioner Smith, any other questions?
I think you've kind of covered it. You've kind of covered it, but you're contending that your home is not historic, if I understand it, that it doesn't go back quite far enough. But the standards for an historic district has to do with the entire neighborhood, the composite feeling. And that happens to be historically one of the most significant streets among a great many.
Commissioner, if I may, I think this is a point that will be appropriate for us to discuss, I think, in helping us to get to a determination as to what we're going to do.
Can I comment on that?
You may.
I agree with you, but there are new builds that still look great and still match the historic and aesthetic feel of the neighborhood, and they're brand-new builds with brand-new construction. And I feel like this home should be treated just like those homes where we'll make it look good and sharp, maintain its character as it is, match the neighborhood, but use a little bit more modern features. I mean, I did have some wood milled to match the wood that got damaged by some structure that was put on the back of it. But, so, like, there is some variance. It's allowed because there's been homes that have built from, you know, 1880 or whatever to 2006, I think, the last home. I don't have my notes in front of me. It would be the last home that was built in there. And a 2006 home has different, although it has the same aesthetic feel and appearance, it definitely has different construction features than a home built in 1880.
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Smith, anything else? Because we can...
No, I have nothing else to add.
Kill your microphone, please. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
I'd echo my fellow commissioners, and thank you for your letter and for the explanation. I did walk your property on Saturday. I knocked on the door, nobody was there, but...
No, it's vacant.
Yeah, I did notice that siding that you changed on the back, and that was, I think, done perfectly with what the spirit of the SOI standards are. It matched perfectly with the existing materials.
Thank you.
And so, I just wanted, yeah, that looked wonderful. I did note that the windows are in rough shape. I noticed one of them was broken, that the pane, one of the panes was broken. As to the color, for this style home, and I don't pretend to be an expert, but I think that having the trim around windows and doors be a different color than the siding of the house is an important feature. Would you be amenable to, because currently, it looks like you're trying to paint the trim the same side as the siding, is that correct?
Yeah.
Would you be amenable to having a trim color be...
Yeah, as long as it looks good.
Understood.
If I, if I may, are you talking about the fascia trim around the house or the trim around the windows?
The trim around the windows and doors.
Well, then, the issue is, if, are you planning to paint the vinyl windows?
Oh, no.
No, see, if I understand correctly, if they, if we were to approve vinyl windows, they would be white, correct?
Yes, sir.
They would be white, so they would already contrast with the color of the house.
I understood. I also have the impression that that, that they installed from the inside, so the trim around the outside would remain, is that...
The trim would remain around the outside. The trim could be painted around the, so if you look on the picture right there, you see the wood trim around, if you look in the middle, that middle window by itself is the easiest one to look at, on the bottom middle. That trim can be painted without, I mean, it's easy. I don't necessarily like that look, but that's, that's fine.
The trim and then a white.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, like I said, I just, I think that's kind of an important feature of that style is to have that, because the windows are a very important part, and this, once again, this gets to our discussion.
So, I concur with that. So, just, just for our clarity, you're amenable to having contrasting colors between the house and the trim? That's not an issue?
No.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, that's not a big deal to us. It's not my style particularly, or our style particularly, but like, I mean, that's not, that's not a make-or-break deal for me by any stretch of the line.
Perfect, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant by commissioners? All right, don't run away, please, but is there any other member of the audience which would like to comment on this project?
Good evening again. I don't know, or I don't think I heard if there were recent purchasers of the property and if they were even notified and disclosed to them that they were looking at a historic district home. And this is why I've always thought it might be more beneficial for the city to send out yearly reminder letters to the realtors to kind of reduce these number of headaches. It's got to be pretty cheap to send a yearly letter, "Hey, Realtor, disclose, there's special review considerations in these certain areas of the city." Just, it would save a lot of headaches for people. For the colors, I personally don't care unless it's crazy pink and green zebra stripes. But to me, it's the one last freedom you can give somebody with their property in California. I do like the contrasting body and trim colors, and, you know, if he really can't stand the red, it can make people crazy, let him go a neutral color on the body and a darker trim around the windows. A question, a procedure question is, if it does need CEQA review, would the item be tabled until the review is complete and/or come back to Planning Commission for a public CEQA hearing? The property looks clean and tidy. You can see all the marks where berries were attached to the building, the yard. It shows pride of ownership. The thing, though, about the way the code reads is, yes, it needs to be replaced like-for-like in materials and style. And the thing, the most important thing is the historic district because the economics around it is huge. It brings in a lot of money to the city. But when a historic district starts to lose piecemeal by piecemeal over time its architectural features, it can just be delisted as no longer having enough value as a historic district. So, you really do, that's why the code has been made the way it is, is to provide some protection, and it's nothing personal. That's why I think everyone should know, if you're looking at this house here or that house there, they might have different reviews. So, that's, yeah, it's, it's nothing personal. It's just that the historic district is important, and if you keep losing it piece by piece, eventually, you can lose the entire district. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment on this project? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to commission for discussion and possible action. I'd like to take the prerogative of the chair and ask the question of staff first of all, though. It was the question as to process was raised, and if you could just speak to that briefly, Pierre, what would that process look like if we found the project needed to go to have a CEQA review? How does that work?
So, basically, if staff understands the question, dependent upon what the decision is of the Planning Commission, say, for example, you deny this project and then direct the applicant to come back and comply, let's just say, much more closely with the Secretarian tier standards. The CEQA finding basically is not subject to CEQA, so it's categorically exempt because it's not a project. So, let's just say that the applicant were to come back and you found that it did comply, or staff would find that it complied with the Secretarian tier standards, we would then prepare a finding that it's categorically exempt under CEQA. As basically complying with the Secretarian standards, there's no impact to an historic resource. But if the commission decides then to make some changes that are clearly different than the Secretarian tier standards, changing out the windows, making them vinyl, which is fine, but there is a CEQA review, then it would be required. So, the project would be, of course, we would want to know exactly what the proposals are. If you adopted the proposals as what's before you, then staff would request that the Planning Commission make appropriate findings to approve the project, refer it back to staff. Staff would then prepare the appropriate environmental evaluation and bring it back to you so you could make the finding determination as well as approving the project.
Okay, so, I thought I understood it before. I think I understand it now, but I understand it differently. Let me see if I get this right. If we were to approve the project as submitted, that in and of itself would trigger the CEQA review?
Correct.
Okay, so now, I want to be clear on that. Now, if we deny the project and say, we're not going to approve the vinyl windows, you're going to have to do like-for-like or repair what you've got, then there's no CEQA, it's exempt from CEQA because it's going to go back, we've made that requirement, so...
That's correct.
And maybe I was the only commissioner that didn't understand that, but now I think I'm clear on that piece. Okay. With that... Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I understand this. So, if you deny this request, there's no CEQA review, but there would be, there would, when would you have to have the CEQA review? Under what circumstances?
So, as you stated that question, Commissioner Smith, if there was, if the commission denied this proposal, there is no CEQA evaluation because we don't have a project. But if you were to approve it as proposed, for example, then it would be remanded back to staff. Following, of course, the Planning Commission's full deliberation, giving direction to staff and making appropriate findings, we would then request that it be remanded back to the staff to come back to you then with a staff report memorializing your actions, your findings, and then we would then bring back a CEQA review. We would do an initial study.
Here's why I asked the question. Because if the concern is about saving money, if you had to go through this CEQA review, what kind of costs would be involved? What kind of price range?
Staff isn't concerned about the cost?
Yes.
Whenever we're processing these applications, it's not something that we consider, but it is a flat fee, and unfortunately, I don't have the fee schedule with me, but I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood. I remember it was $1,200, maybe it's $2,100 or something of that nature for preparing a mitigated negative declaration.
Which the applicant has to consider as associated with the project. So, that gets into the kind of the economic component that I think that we will, that we will discuss. And then I had one more question of staff, which I just forgot, so, oh, yeah, I remember now. The colors, the colors would, it's really the vinyl windows that causes the issue, it's not really the colors, correct? I want to make sure that, so if we decide to go with a different color than what the house is now, we can have some deliberation, but that's not what would require a CEQA review, is that correct? Unless we pick something outlandish, zebra pink or something like that, right?
That was staff's analysis, that the windows were the only thing that were not categorically exempt.
Okay, great. So, with that, what I would like to do is to start first with the color palette and see if we can get concurrence and do a motion to approve the colors, then we can have the discussion on the windows, because I think that's what will take up the greatest time, if that's amenable.
Question regarding CEQA.
Microphone, good. Good. Good, Commissioner.
I don't see the CEQA as absolutely required in this case. So, you're going to have to explain to me again. The way I read the Secretary of Interior Standards on Page 33, replacing in-kind an entire window that's too deteriorated, and the text goes on to say, "If it's beyond repair and a compatible substitute material may be considered." And in the standards, it says that, let me find the line here, but it does state that if it's not economically feasible, that is a consideration. So, if the Planning Commission made a finding that the applicant has, in good faith, considered how he could restore those windows, finding that economically infeasible, and is going with what the Planning Commission determines to be a suitable replacement, then with that finding and that statement, does, how is that, or is that still a violation? Is that then going to trigger CEQA? Because the way I see it is that if the commission feels that this is for good reason, an adequate and appropriate substitute that preserves the structure, that preserves the aesthetic, the facade treatments from the street view, then how is it that CEQA would still be triggered? At least in initial study?
Excellent question.
Because the way I interpret it, if we, if we make that finding tonight, and quite frankly, I'm not happy with the project itself, I still would want some changes, but if we made that finding, then is CEQA still triggered?
In staff's opinion, yes. Because we would not be able to make a finding that it's categorically exempt because you're changing, you're actually changing the materials or changing and modifying the historic character of that building.
If I may, though, to Commissioner...
The staff would want to do a thorough analysis, and staff has not done any kind of economic analysis either. So, you bring in new issues into the mix, staff would want to examine and come back with appropriate findings.
Okay, so, this is, this is really important, and it's very interesting, and bear with us. So, in following Commissioner Keeney's question, because I was kind of in that mind, and throughout the standards and guidelines, first, by the way, first of all, it says, quote, and I looked it up on my little phone here, "The guidelines are advisory and not regulatory." It's very clearly stated in the standards. These are, these guidelines are advisory, not regulatory. Then it depends what local government decides how they want to apply them, right? And I get that. But also, the standards and guidelines also say, throughout the document, not just on that page, but throughout the document, "The considerations of economic and technical feasibility must be considered." Okay. So, if we consider that and we make a determination that it's not economically feasible, or it's, the cost is too significant to warrant like-for-like or restoration, and so we approve vinyl, how does that trigger CEQA? We've made the, we've made the determination. We've evaluated it, we have data that says this, or we could even ask the applicant to bring in more... even ask the applicant to bring in more cost data, and then, and we make that determination, how does that trigger sequa?
Again, we don't have that information before us.
You mean the cost information?
We don't have the cost information, and I think staff would challenge the infeasibility of replacing the wood windows with wood. If you recall, it was in the more recent past that there was a similar project that was before you. Sci plan review in an historic district, and in this case, the applicant actually took out the wood windows, put vinyl windows in, in this commission, and it was appealed to the council. The council upheld that decision of the planning commission to replace it with wood, because it was feasible, both from a technical and a financial point of view. It wasn't something that was very expensive. But what, that's, that's almost a term of art. So, we don't have the information to make that kind of a call.
To me, this is really key, and to the benefit, you know, of my fellow commissioners, bear with me. How is that, how is that economic threshold determined? Seriously, what is the objective point, right? Where we say, "Yes, that meets economic infeasibility." How do we know, right? How is that, what's the process for determining that? What data is required, you know, to meet that? For us to say, "Yes, it's too expensive," or "No, it's not." How do we get there? Because I'm confused on that point.
We would need to see financial information submitted. What is the cost? What is the cost comparison?
Okay. And the applicant could submit that to you?
Yes.
Okay, so then, if I understand correctly, one option we have, one option we have, is to table this project, to give the applicant an opportunity to present that information to staff, to make that determination, and then have it brought back. I just want us to have clarity on that point. Is that correct, Pierre? Okay, all right. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, if you would, Mr. Pierre Rivas, as I recall, there was a workshop done about eight to 10 years ago. Wasn't a tape of that presentation provided to commissioners in the past?
I believe that tape was provided to the commissioners from city planner, painter.
The reason that's important is, in response to what's been raised, is that all those experts from various places throughout Northern California, people in government, academic, the public sectors, all consistently said that if you have an historic district, and you faithfully followed specific standards, the property values overall go up, and those house values will remain. So, we're not talking about just the value of the houses, we're talking about the standard of life, the quality of life in the neighborhood. If you use these terms that have been described, that are very amorphous, I don't know how you're going to define what is economically feasible. I mean, we're talking about, on this record alone, a cost of $10,000 versus $20,000. And that's based only on the report of one manufacturer of windows and one contractor. There's a whole bunch out there. For the persons in the situation of the applicant, there are lots of solutions. Mr. Grobisch mentioned one, which is to make sure that a letter was sent to people in the real estate community, when they're selling houses, to make sure people know what the standards are. There can be a directory that we have of services available, where you go to Diamond Lumber, Home Depot, and a whole bunch of others, to find out what kind of materials are available, and what are the cost factors. So, if we have, so, I think I want to get away from terms like technically feasible, they're just too amorphous. And once you do that, you're going to go undermining what those standards, as was described in the workshop eight to 10 years ago.
Except, Commissioner, throughout the standard document, it says, "Each project, as part of a consideration of project, economic and technical feasibility need to be considered." And in this case, I would say that the economic feasibility is not only getting prices for wood versus vinyl, but also, they've already put down a deposit, or they already have money invested, which they would probably lose, so that has to be part of the calculation. So, I think the process here is, depending on where we go with the project, the process would be, the applicant would have to bring information, data to staff, financial data to staff, and say, "Okay, we can go option A or option B, we have these different suppliers, installers, et cetera, here's what the cost comparison looks like." In terms of the property values and the values of the neighborhood, the standards and guidelines make no reference to that being a consideration or calculation when looking at the specific project. So, that's just how that is. I think that's where we need to be. So, I think what I'd like to do, Commissioner Keeney, you said you had some other issues with this project that you were not happy with. I think maybe we ought to have some discussion on those, see where we're at. I'd like to try to get past the color piece, and then I think we can make a decision on what we want to do with regards to the windows, to make them consistent with the spirit of the standard and guidelines, to make them consistent with the city's desire for historic districts, et cetera, and go from that point. So, if we can start there, that's what I would like to do.
Perfect. So, exclusive of the windows, I will defer to my fellow commissioners on the colors, noting my preference that the trim pieces, I really don't care what color it is, but I would like to see distinctive coloring on the trim pieces to match.
Contrast?
Contrast, thank you. Yeah, that's perfect determining. And then, as far as the lantern sconces, I'm okay with the two choices that the applicant has, unless, Mr. Rivas, would that lantern sconce choice be enough to alter, to trigger a sequa? Or is it just the windows? I know you said it was just the windows, I just want to double check to make sure I'm correct on that.
That's staff's opinion.
Okay. Then, I'm good with the lantern sconce choices of the applicant, so those, I think, are the only two determinations we have besides the windows?
Just for clarity and for my edification, when you're talking about contrasting and trim, are you talking both the fascia trim as well as the window trim? And do those need to match, in your opinion?
I like the idea of having the gutters match the roof, so the gutter color selection, I'm totally okay with that. I was referring only to the window trim and the door trim. The pieces that are already contrasting colors currently, I'd like to see them stay contrasting.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Keeney?
Okay, thank you. I agree with Commissioner Carter. My thoughts on that is, my thought on that is to carry through that contrast that we have, and I, there's a range of, you can go, other houses in Placerville in that district, you'll see dark trim on a light body, you'll see the opposite, and I just would want to see, you know, what you can bring forward, that I think more closely either restores what we see before us, or is a more similar style in the rest of the neighborhood. And I appreciate that there aren't a lot of other ranch houses adjacent to yours, there's one, you know, kind of the twin right next door, and, you know, you don't have to duplicate what they've got, but that was important to me. I think the, my concern is the focus on the fenestration only, and I think that there are other elements that are equally important as far as the street view, which is, you know, what's stated in our ordinance. I would prefer to see a different sconce. I feel like the one that's chosen does fit the neighborhood better than it fits the house. So, I would like to see something maybe a little more modern in style. And then, to get back, I just, we didn't quite wrap up with the rest of the request. It's my feeling that if we have more information about the windows and costs, that then, the project would, could be considered exempt from sequa as a maintenance, minor modification to an existing structure, as opposed to, yeah, requiring sequa. But we aren't in a position tonight to make that finding. So, my request is, I think we're all kind of moving in that direction, we need more information about the options for these different style windows, so that in a future meeting, we can be confident and make a finding that the window choice is made because of technical and economic reasons. Also, I would like to see more actual pictures of, or detailed pictures of the windows that you intend to put in place, maybe side-by-side with the existing windows. I don't find that, I find the brochure a little confusing, I'm not really sure, there's divided light examples in there. And again, for us to make a strong finding, and I would want to be confident that I knew what it, specifically what it was, maybe even into the point of bringing in an example, so we can come down off the dais and take a look at it, and/or stand back and say, you know, "What does that really look like?" So, that's, those are my thoughts on how, the additional information I feel we need to take any kind of action on this project. I also want to, at this point, say that I would not take action on the staff recommendations tonight. I feel like, I just don't agree with the conclusions in the staff. So, I think you are on the right track. We need more information, and this is the kind of information that I would like to have at a subsequent meeting.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Again, I think I understand it, then I think I get confused. Even if we had the right information that we felt was sufficient to justify where the applicant wants to go, it is still staff's opinion, and unless we go with like-for-like or wooden windows, even if we felt there was sufficient data brought by the applicant to us to justify the vinyl, that would trigger sequa. That's staff's opinion, am I understanding that correctly? That's staff's opinion. Okay, so, and then, let me just follow that, and then I'm going to go to you, Commissioner Smith, as I go around of the commissioners. If we were to deny the project, the applicant could appeal to city council, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Then, if city council were to find that the data was compelling enough to allow them to put in vinyl windows, they would still have to do a sequa?
Staff would evaluate that, but again, we do not have the technical or the financial information.
No, 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 I'm sorry. If city council were to decide that, yes, the applicant brought information that would say it's economically or technically infeasible, it's just too much, and they said, "Okay, we're going to allow you to have vinyl," council would still be bound by kind of the same staff assessment that we are, right? And would have to, it would have to have, it would trigger a sequa, is my question, wouldn't it? Council can't bypass a sequa.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, it looks like we're going to be faced with a sequa one way or the other, with the only option out of that is, the applicant either A, decides not to do the project at all, or the applicant decides to do like-for-like wooden windows, is that correct?
Well, basically, we just have insufficient information, because we have to come back, because we're going to have to advertise, this is what, this is the finding that we're making in accordance with sequa, based on the information provided, and right now, we're speculating, so...
Right, no, no, right, so I get that part, Pierre, no problem with that. But it seems that we can't escape sequa. The only way to escape sequa is if the applicant decides not to do the project, or the applicant goes ahead with wooden windows like-for-like. That's the only way to avoid sequa.
Well, again, I think, as you pointed out, there is flexibility under the secretary interior standards. If you could show that technically, or feasibility, or financially, that this is the best option to preserve that building and retain its historic character, then you can make the appropriate findings, and then we would evaluate under sequa. And hopefully, we could then find it exempt.
You...
But we have insufficient information to do that.
I'm sorry...
That's all I'm saying.
I get that, Pierre, and I hope we're not talking in circles. When you determine that it's exempt from sequa, that's not a sequa evaluation, that's something else?
When you determine it categorically exempt, it is a sequa finding.
Okay, so, what we need then, to get to that point, then, we need to have more information as to justify not doing like-for-like, is that correct? All right, so Commissioner Smith?
I have another idea. Basic administrative law, the applicant has the burden of persuasion. If the information that we have now is not sufficient to meet this amorphous standard of what's technically feasible or economically justified, then it needs to be denied. I suppose there are other remedies under those circumstances, like seeking a motion for reconsideration under Roberts Rules of Order. But in any event, based on this record, that would be the appropriate answer. Why? Because then we're going to go down a very slippery slope. A suggestion's been made, a deposit was made. I'm going to accept that fact that a deposit was made. We don't have the instrument in front of us, we don't know anything to confirm the assumption that that deposit is not refundable. We haven't seen, if you're going to use these terms, like technically feasible, I can think of some kind of structure underneath, like the culvert that runs up Cedar Ravine underneath would be jeopardized, that kind of thing, that's a technical problem. It's the argument that I understand is being used for having to move the Druids Monument is underneath, it's technically not feasible, because you've got something underneath. That's something that's concrete. But to say, just because across, then your standards are out the window, I can't see any situation where you cannot make the same arguments next week, the week after, and so on down the line. And if so, then there's no longer any standards. And that's my concern.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, that's very good. All right. Where I think we are with this, then, at this point, I am not uncomfortable, just to close the loop, I don't know if I weighed in, I'm not uncomfortable with the lighting fixtures as proposed, I don't have an issue with that. I do support the requirement for contrasting colors, and colors that are compatible with the neighborhood, as presented, and then, I'm happy that the applicant could work that out with staff, right? Let staff have the final approval on that, that's not an issue. But regardless, I think where this needs to go, with respect, Commissioner, I would not support a proposal to simply deny, only because this process, this justification process for the standards and guidelines, I think is, I won't say it's new to all of us, but it's, it requires some serious navigation. So, I would be inclined to want to give the applicant the opportunity to bring data back to us as an argument, where the burden of proof is on the applicant, I agree with you, Commissioner, to have the argument, bring the information that shows, you know, if we were to go like-for-like, it's going to cost this, this is what it looks like, okay, assuming it can be done. I don't think there's a technical feasibility issue, I think it's economic, but we don't know that. So, we got, we got, and generally, the standard is to get like three bids, I think that's a pretty good standard. This is what it looks like for this, for wood, this is what it looks like for vinyl, okay? And then, the commission takes that data, and then we make a determination as to whether or not it's sufficient to find the finding. If I'm understanding that correctly, we would be able to do that, is that correct, Pierre?
I think that sounds about right to me.
Okay, so...
Does that require a motion? Do we have to take action, or can we simply, the applicant is here, has heard the discussion? Do we need to take it action?
My recommendation would be that you do continue this item, directing it back to the applicant to come back with and put together your list of information you would like to see, so that you can make your decision. information you would like to see so that you can make your decision. And I think that that would include not only just a hard argument as to why vinyl versus wood is why we need to go this way, but also, I would like them to say, here's the color, here's the colors that we want to do, and it will look like this, okay? And be a little more specific. I appreciate all the options you gave us and the flexibility, but I think it'd be much more helpful to say, we're going to do, we'd like to do it this way, and then let us provide some feedback on that.
And you had mentioned about staff approval, and the applicant mentioned something about going with that stone work. At a later date, could give staff the authority for any minor modifications, but, you know, that way, the planning commission would know roughly what it is they're talking about. Shades, tones might vary a little bit, but we would be confident what the structure generally would look like.
Yes. So I think a motion to continue, we usually go 60 days.
I think we want to give the applicant sufficient time to collect the information. I don't know if there's any real time limit, other than you could pick a date in the future so that's time certain, and that way, we don't have to re-advertise.
But we don't need to, we don't, do we need to pick a date certain, or?
We do, because if we don't, then we have to re-advertise the project.
Okay. Gotcha. So, but we could go as much as six months, and they could come to us before that, right? If we say no later than, but if they decided they got their stuff together sooner, they could come back, or no?
My recommendation would be to consult with the applicant and see what their timeframe is to comply with your request.
So I'm going to invite the applicant back up to the podium to help us decide, and you're following kind of what our discussion is here, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. How long do you think you would need to put together a good argument that would support?
Can I throw in one other question?
Sure. Go ahead.
This might be a little bit out of order, but what about a composite window that actually has wood grain in it? So they do make a window that's composite, it's, I think it's closer, it's cheaper than wood, it's more expensive than vinyl, but it's, hopefully, it's a little bit more in the middle, and they, there's only a couple of brands that actually make a composite window that actually will fit in, in this project. Would that be something that would be considered like-for-like?
I'm going to, go, go ahead.
I would encourage you to include that, but I would definitely encourage you to also bring a wood option also.
Of course.
If that makes sense, yeah. Definitely encourage you to bring all the options that you, that you think are feasible, and then we can make that determination, but yeah.
All right.
So how much, how much time do you think you need to put this together?
So.
Yes.
This is a little bit of a tricky question, because I don't know exactly what you want. Like, I can get certain bids, like quickly. I don't know about a repair company to come in and price out putting in triple-pane windows for, in these, and I don't even know if the sashes are wide enough for a triple-pane window, to be, to be honest with you. So I don't know, I don't even know a company that does that.
Right. So that becomes a technical feasibility issue, right? So you, I, my, what I would recommend is you, you ask a window guy and say, is there anybody that could do this, if they know of anybody? And maybe ask two different window people, and he can say, well, I asked this, this person, and I asked this person, and it came up zero. Okay. So you can, you can cross that one off. I think it's legit.
And then Commissioner Keeney, you have an eye for the colors. Can we get together and talk about the trim? Because in my estimation, I would, well, I don't know if that's allowed or not. Sorry.
Is that allowed?
Because in my estimation.
I want to give you as much leeway as possible. My only concern is maintaining the contrast look.
Yeah. But, okay. Well, but I don't want to bring in a contrast that you're like, oh, I don't like that at all.
Ex parte is okay, Pierre.
Because this is a little bit, this is, this is a little bit of personal taste stuff right now, and so.
Yeah. And I don't want that to come into play at all. I want, you know, this is your house. My concern for maintaining that contrast, and Commissioner Carter chimed in on that too. I think also Mr. Trobisch spoke to that. That, that's all we're looking for, is that we go from something with contrast to one color.
Fluorescent green it is. For kidding.
But as long as, Pierre, as long as it's disclosed, the ex parte communication is all right, as long as it's disclosed?
So I'm not too sure about that. I think typically, an individual planning commission should not be negotiating conditions regarding a project with the applicant. That should be done in open form with all.
Okay. I just recall when Commissioner Patton and I, and Steve Calfee, we met with an applicant to discuss possibilities. So I just remember that that happened, but that's all right. Okay.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to work and understand and get what you guys want, because I need, I want to get this thing done.
Right. We understand.
And just remember, it was a real bad eyesore, and it's even cleaner now than it was.
Right. So we're back to.
Please put down.
I think it's, the simple question is, how much time do you need?
April. You guys, you guys made it the third week.
The first and third Tuesdays of the month, except for July 4.
It would have to be. It would have to be at least 30 days, though. Is that correct, Steph?
No. I would like at least 30 days, because I don't know, some of these things, it could take a little while.
It could be 60 days, 90 days. I mean, we can go out, we can go out 90 days.
What are your meetings in June? I don't have my calendar in front of me, so.
We have one on June 6th and potentially June 20th. Into July, it would be July 18th.
I'm comfortable with by June 20th. Is that all right, or is that, you said potentially June 20th. Were you guys not planning?
No, no. If you, if you want June 20, then we will have a meeting because we will have an agenda item.
Right.
Because I could shoot to get it done by June 6. Oh, just kidding. That's why my wife's here.
All right. So, June.
You worked June 20th, but you could get it done.
Well, I'll figure it out. Okay. Hold on one second.
June 20th, then.
June 20, or you want June 20 and not July 18?
Yeah. That's camping trips with the kids.
Fair enough. Then we'll, we'll have consideration to go to June 20.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, here's my understanding.
Microphone, please.
Just to ask, Commissioner, you're saying you want contrast, and that you approve the color palettes that have been proposed. Am I correct in what you're asking for?
Yes.
And they want contrast as well, using the same.
No, I actually, I would prefer to just have the gutters match the roof and have it all one color. It's a little teeny building, and I think it will look sharp that way, personally, but that's, I'm, that's, this isn't a make or break deal for me. Like, it takes me, I don't know what to tell you. Like, okay, I'll do the contrast.
My fault for not bringing the Harry Hayes. I'm sorry. But you're saying you want a solid color?
I prefer that, yes.
Okay. So then we do have a need to.
Yeah. But we're going to, we're going to want contrast, so you go into it already knowing that. All right. Thank you.
And I just want to underscore that the, what we, what you can help us do with this project is to give us as much information and data to support your preferred choice. From where we sit tonight, we don't have the information we need. And, you know, honestly, we've talked a bit about the other components, but the windows are the big sticking point, in part because the SOI standards, spends a lot of time talking about that. They, you know, we don't really have a lot of, you know, direction on what exterior lights must look like. So appreciate.
Well, I'm not 100% sure they're the original windows, because they did do metal windows at that time as well, so.
But, yeah, whatever you can provide for us ahead of time so that we can consider economics, feasibility, and then the aesthetics. So have your window people give you, you know, the, focus in on the window that you want. I'll admit, I'm a little, was a little confused that the brochures had different options. So show us what your preferred alternative is.
So I just want to be clear that I have not reopened the public hearing.
Okay.
We simply were asking the applicant for how much time they needed.
Right.
So that, that.
Sorry. I took the liberty in a small town.
No, no, no. Sorry. And Mike, I see, you know, you're up, but the public hearing is, is not open.
They're asking questions of you.
Right. And that's okay, because we had, we had a question of the applicant for, and really, it's just about the date. Okay. So we have that information. I think I would like to hear a motion of continuation to June 20. Do we have a motion?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the item to June 20. Any discussion on the item?
The question I was going to ask a moment ago is, if he's saying they want vinyl, and vinyl comes white, then you're necessarily going to have white trim? Or is it just because you're saying you want more trim to be contrasting? How, if it's vinyl, then it's necessarily going to be contrasting? What did I miss?
I'm not concerned about that.
I'm not concerned about that either.
My, my concern is to avoid the monochrome for the body.
It's going to be a non-monotone with the vinyl, if, if that's what you want.
It would be, it would be monochrome. It would be monochrome if it was a white house, right? With white, with white vinyl windows. That would be monochrome, so we don't want that. If we wind it, if we were to wind it with white windows, that would preclude the house being painted white. Is that right?
Well, the house could be white, but the trim around the windows needs to have a contrast.
Okay.
So they can go with the white body color. That's, that's not a concern.
As long as, as long as the trim around the windows contrasts.
Right.
Yeah. Vice Chair Friend, if staff could make a comment.
Yes.
It sounds as though we're thinking that the vinyl window is, is going to be the trim that's showing on the outside. My understanding from the applicant, and the applicant can clarify, is that the windows are going to be set from the inside.
Yeah.
And it's not changing, not changing any of the frame around the window.
That's correct. That's my error. That's my error.
And again, I think a little more detail, you know, maybe just one example rather than every option in the brochure, so that we know what it is you intend to do. So that, that's not something I had, you see that on houses throughout. You'll see a contract, a trim piece around the window, and then there'll be either a dark frame of the window itself, or a light frame. So just what I'm looking for is to, to know what the, the final result's going to look like.
All right. So I have a, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote for this, please. Commissioner Carter. Aye. Vice Chair Friend. Aye. Commissioner Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Okay. Motion carries on a three-to-one vote. I don't believe this decision's appealable, so we will see you again on June 20. Okay. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the deliberation that we have here. This is a, one of our most vexing issues, I think, that we have to deal with, so.
I just think we need to gather as much information, make the strongest findings we can, because things are, if it's contentious, then it, it just goes up to city council, causing more work for staff, for everyone. And I think if the planning commission does the work and makes the proper findings and the proper decision, then that's just better for, you know, the whole process.
Correct. I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on then, item 11, continued items, we have none.
Could the staff ask just for a five minute?
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
A five-minute recess, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All righty then. We are now on item, item 12, new business, 12.1, election of officers. We are going to hold this item until we have all five commission members present. So that will be continued. 12.2, review and amendment of the planning commission bylaws. And I want to thank staff for putting a copy of the bylaws in with the packet, because I scrambled to find my old copy, and I couldn't. So thank you for that. That item will also be continued until such time as we have all five commissioners present.
You're very welcome, but if staff can just point out, that is not a requirement. We just put it on there since we have new members on the planning commission. It gives the new commissioners a chance to review those bylaws. But if the commission, at some future date, determine that no change is necessary, we will remove that. So it's nothing mandatory, there's nothing that says it has to be changed. It's just an opportunity for the commission to make changes.
You're talking about 12.2?
12.2.
Okay. Great. Well, since we do have new commissioners, I think it's a good opportunity to have it, so we'll, we'll keep it on, on the agenda. I would encourage commissioners to review the bylaws, and if they have questions and recommended for amendments or whatever, that we, you bring them forth. Okay. Any questions from commissioners on that? All right. Item 13, matters from commissioners and staff. Staff reports, please.
Staff has nothing to report, other than we, we will report that we have received some additional applications. We will be processing a site plan review for the Hanktown shooting range. They're going to do a little expansion of a retail portion that they're going to add to the facility, so that'll come before you sometime in the, in the near future. We also have some additional site plan review requests for changes within homes located in historic districts. So we have some more of those that will come before you.
Okay. And we will have a meeting in the first Tuesday in May?
That is correct.
Okay. Terrific. Anything else from Commissioner Smith?
Well, one suggestion about what we could do next time is, could we have a, as the bylaws provide, a subcommittee that would address historic preservation issues that we have on the security Secretary of Interior guidelines? So we can examine, come back, and make recommendations regarding things like how to do it in, in a manner that is consistent, uniform, and something the public can rely on. Wasn't that long ago that the same issue came up about vinyl windows, and they had to tear them down and put, and go back and forth? So I think the public needs consistency, and it'd be good to have a subcommittee that looked at terms like economically feasible and so on.
I, but, go ahead, Pierre.
Yeah. Staff just has a comment on that. Staff wants to remind the planning commission that the city council did allocate some monies to seek an expert, an architect, in the field of rehabilitation of historic structures. So we intend on doing that. We apologize, we haven't done it yet. We've just been pretty, pretty busy in our office, but we're going to do that sooner rather than later, once we find somebody that's willing to do, do that. And we would hold a joint workshop with the city council and the planning commission to discuss our historic districts.
I look forward to that. And what I'd, what I would encourage commissioners and, not speaking against your suggestion, Kirk, what I would actually recommend folks do is to grab the ordinance, or, and grab the standards and guidelines, and go through and generate your questions. Because I, I mean, I, I have a number of questions about how we are to apply things. And, and I mean, I know on one extreme, or one end, I won't say in an extreme, on one end of the spectrum is, you know, it, we have to absolutely meet the law. I think you actually use the term law. The standards and guidelines themselves are not law. Very clearly, they say we are advisory, not regulatory. Now, our ordinance is law, and so we have to follow that. And I think I, for one, have questions about the applicability. I would encourage everyone to kind of go through that. When we get to this workshop, then, we, we can have those questions, and possibly have a subcommittee to, to look at that and, and could generate questions. So I think we should give some, some thought to that. I think we're really under 13.2 planning commission matters. I think it's a good suggestion, Kirk, and we can figure out where, where we go with that. Other thoughts?
Yeah. There's two more that come to mind, and, and it's along the lines, first of all, what Mr. Trobisch suggested earlier, to help the public be guided through this process. And it would be to have, one, real estate agents informed and owners informed about the guidelines that apply to those historic districts. Secondly, that there be a, uh, material available to help on where to go to find information about windows and things like that, that are going to be energy efficient and be consistent with the guidelines. Uh, we've never put that kind of resource material together, but it's something that we could, under the bylaws, recommend to the City Council, that they, they do. Uh, the, so that, that seems like, like one thing that we could do, and it, the last one, is that, uh, Councilmember Clarici has proposed that the Historic Advisory Committee be brought back. And so the suggestion would be that on the next agenda, we have that raised, so it can be discussed, and then in a position to make a recommendation to the council. Uh, again, it can't be discussed tonight, any of those things, but they can be put on an agenda.
Good enough. I, it also occurs to me that the Association of Realtors, they meet, they, they have meetings, and-
Do you want me to provide some input?
Well, and I was just saying that that's an opportunity for a representative of the city, whether it's staff or a commissioner, to go and say, hey, this is something you need to know about, so that you can advise your buyers and your sellers. Okay, and I, I think we can kind of close that gap. Did you have comments on that?
Not quite sure how to go about this, but if it's the pleasure of the committee, I do have a member of EDCAR that I have direct contact with, that can provide current information for what disclosures are currently, uh, necessary. That would kind of help inform our decision, um, kind of moving forward in this vein. If we know what is currently provided, or what is currently required of buyers to disclose in real estate transactions in historical districts, that might, uh, help to inform our decision. So if it's this commission's pleasure, I could, I could ask for that information and provide it, uh, at a later date.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, that, I, I think anything like that helps. Um, Pierre, any update on the hotel project on, uh, Jaquay Point View?
Um, the department is still waiting for the resubmital of their, um, uh, plan check.
Okay.
They, they've submitted their, uh, building permit application, there was a first review done, comments provided, and we're waiting for the resubmital.
Okay, so, but as far as we know, everything is still proceeding, although it's slow.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, any other commissioners have questions of staff?
I have, uh, one request, uh, matters, well, we have new members on the, the commission, and, uh, Ms. Hunter, you circulated some time ago, a link of, for a new presentation on, uh, historical preservation. Now, the city has in its archives, um, someone came and, and gave us a presentation, it's, it's really not watchable, and it's very not listenable, so I just request that you, uh, send that to the new Planning Commission, uh, you know, and maybe, i- is it posted on our, our website?
It is not posted on our website, um, it is on, um, can't remember what agency it is.
I, I can go back through my emails, but it just occurred to me tonight that, you know, I need to look at that again, uh, refresh my memory, and it would be good for the new commissioners to see.
There, I believe, is a set of five videos associated with it, um, and so I can provide that. I can send an email tomorrow, or later this week.
All right, thank you. Um, if there's no other business, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, I have-
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I have a couple of things.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, one, I would like to, um, formally, uh, ask for a, an agenda item, uh, in regards to Resolution 201901. Uh, I've got copies here, uh, from my fellow commissioners, if they need them. Um, I, I would like to, uh, have an agenda item to revisit this resolution, and, uh, I'm not sure of the exact terminology, but to, uh, dissolve it, or to, uh-
Amend it?
No, just to, uh-
What, what resolution is it, I'm sorry? What does it deal with?
It, it's from 2019, directing staff to establish exemptions in the site plan review, and also establish exemptions in certain types of alteration activities of buildings in historic districts. Uh, this is, back, like I said, back from 2019, before, uh, the time of the current, um, director, and, um, from my research, um, looking into the city codes and the dates of the last, um, amendments, uh, none of this work has been done, um, it doesn't appear to be, and so, this, I think, is from kind of a fore, like a, uh, this direction, I don't believe, i- is, is applicable to our current, uh, conversation, and it's kind of just hanging out there, directing staff to do something. I have an extra copy for you, too.
No, no, I got it.
But, um, I, I would like to visit, uh, getting rid of this resolution, in light of, um, where the city is kind of moving. I think that this resolution does not, um, uh, kind of follow, I think, where we're going in this conversation.
Okay, well, um, the chair will certainly not, um, prohibit or deny, uh, the item being agendized. Um, so Pierre, I guess we'll ask that this resolution be brought back for, uh, discussion, and, and, I guess it'd be appropriate for, uh, Commissioner Carter to have more discussion with you, as to where exactly he's coming from, and then you can go from there. So, that's fair enough, Commissioner. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, one more thing. Um, I also would like to echo, um, Commissioner Smith's desire to, um, either appoint a special committee, which is in our purview by the bylaws, um, to, that there is an appetite in the, in the City Council, it has been brought up numerous times in the last couple of months by s, members of the, of the City Council, that there is an appetite for bringing back the, uh, Historical Advisory Committee. Um, I believe that since that, uh, responsibility currently lies with this body, that we are kind of responsible for making recommendations, uh, in that regard to City Council. Um, what I would like to see is either one of two things. Um, either we set up a special committee, which, special committees are discharged at the end of their assignment, right? So, in that regard, I would like to set up that subcommittee to, uh, look at the old resolution that established the, uh, Historical Advisory Committee, because I believe there's some inconsistencies with what we're looking, or what the City Council has in mind for that body now. Um, but I would like that subcommittee to look over the roles, responsibilities, and the membership of, uh, of a Historical Advisory Committee, and then have that subcommittee bring back recommendations to this body that we could discuss, and then forward to City Council on how to move forward on establishing, or re, or re-establishing that, uh, Historical Advisory Committee. If not that, then I would like to see us actually have a standing committee, because that is in our purview, and we have that responsibility, we're currently not filling that responsibility. I believe we need to have a standing committee that follows through on our requirements to, um, be the Historical Advisory Committee at this point.
So, Pierre, if I, if I may, um, to staff, if, uh, we, if it was a desire of the commission to establish, um, a subcommittee, uh, to do whatever, actually, any subcommittee, whether it's this topic or something else, does that have to be an agendized item for us, or is that something we can just simply do by fiat?
It does not, you wouldn't want to have a quorum, so you're looking at, you know, two, two people on a subcommittee.
No, 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 I'm sorry, that, that was my question, I wasn't clear. Let's say, we agree, yes, we, we would like to put together a committee of two people, you're saying no more, we don't want a quorum, so with two, two members, uh, to serve, uh, a specific task, it'd be a focused task. My question is, does that action, to do that, does that have to be an agenda item that we're going to do? Or do we, and if not, how do we just do it?
I believe it does.
Okay.
But I'll double check for you. It would be my understanding, then, that the, that the Planning Commission would actually authorize the formation of a subcommittee, and then the commission as a whole then would appoint the two members that would serve on that subcommittee. The only, you know, the only comment I think would staff would, would make, uh, in response to Commissioner Carter's, uh, request, is that, that you would postpone moving forward on, on any items in regards to historic district until following the workshop that the City Council would like to have with the Planning Commission, that joint workshop. I think a lot of direction will be provided, then, on where the city needs to go following that workshop.
I, I, I think that's a good suggestion. Uh, first of all, I agree with your opinion that we would need to agendize, uh, setting up the committee, I think that's a good idea, anyway, for transparency. At the same time, I think Commissioner Carter is bringing up a very good point, in that this body is charged with the responsibilities that the Historic Committee historically had, and so we don't have anyone assigned to do that, and perhaps we should do that anyway? And, and even, and the workshop would provide some information, but shouldn't we have, uh, in the absence of a Historic Review Committee, that the council may or may not reauthorize, shouldn't we put together a couple of members, as allowed in our bylaws, to, to serve in, in the interim?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, the form a subcommittee.
Okay.
But I would just caution that, that, you know, really, I think the council was, it was a desire of the council to have this, uh, workshop, and that followed some of the previous site plan reviews that had gone, uh, to council.
Fair enough.
Um, it's one council member that's, uh, is interested in bringing back, he has expressed his desire to bring back the, um, Historic Advisory Committee, but it's only one of the council members. It was council action that disbanded, uh, Historic Advisory Committee, directing it to be then handled by, through the Planning Commission.
All right, so here's what I would like to do, I request that staff go ahead and put this on, uh, our next agenda, uh, for the formation. I think this group of two could certainly get together in advance, um, and they would also be authorized to meet with a, a council member, uh, to talk to them about their, their ideas, and then, there's probably some stuff that we could be doing until such time as we get the workshop and move forward, and just kind of see how it evolves. And I, I think it, clearly, this comes up, uh, clearly, we all, I think we all care, generally, it's, our approaches, you know, and our, our thoughts on it might just be a little bit different, so I think it's a good idea. Right? Uh, anything else? All right, yes, Commissioner Kirk?
The question I have is, Commissioner Carter, uh, you earlier mentioned that this resolution is something you would ask be on the agenda, so we decide whether to keep it or reverse it, is that right?
It is my desire, at some point, uh, that we see an agenda item to address that resolution, and it would, obviously, it would be a discussion, we would decide what to do, but I would like to see us discuss that, uh, that resolution.
Any reason why we can't do it at the next meeting?
Uh, that's up to staff, I mean, I, I can, my request was to put it on the agenda, but it's up to staff, obviously, to when it gets agendized.
And it may be relevant to establishing that this other small group, so. All right, um, a good discussion, any other discussion? Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.